Board meeting of June 1st, 2021. Pursuant to the government of Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law, House General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's Act 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Middleborough Planning Board was conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. I'd like everybody to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty for justice for all. Okay, announcements of continued hearings. We do, at 7:15, we've got great Cedar Village on. And anybody that is here, I believe that we're probably going to continue that, but I don't want to say that for sure at this time. So we don't have any continued hearings. Do we have anything unanticipated? Any of the members, anything unanticipated? We're all set there. We have payments to bills. We have two bills to pay, I believe. Mr. Mandiel, do you want to go through these?
I can. So the first one-
Okay. So I just, we share a vehicle with conservation, is that not correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so are they paying half of this, we paying the full amount?
No, it's actually a planning vehicle that conservation also uses. They don't have, they don't specifically have a budget for it. The budget was appropriated for planning.
Okay. So this is, I'll go through it. We have two bills for 2012 Ford Escape XLT, one being a mass state inspection for $35, and the second one being an oil change and wipe-up blades in the amount of $77.45. That was for POPS. To change the order, the Highway Department does that free of charge, I guess, because there's no charge for it. So we're looking for a motion.
Motion to pay the bills?
Motion by Mr. Gasso to approve the two bills. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Healy. Roll call, vote. Mr. Gasso?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
In favor?
Ms. McGee?
Aye.
Is Mr. Frally on?
He is not.
Okay. I don't see Mr. Frally in chair votes, aye. The bills are paid. We're on to a little bit, well, we got approval of minutes. We have the 18th minutes. Has everybody read them and do they have any changes in them? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the May 18, 2021 minutes?
Move approval.
Mr. Healy moves to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second. No?
Second by Mr. Gasso. Roll call, vote. Mr. Gasso?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ms. McGee?
Aye.
And chair votes, aye. We have approval of Form A's, 121 Old Center Street, MAP 28 lot 3173, William Stanley. This is something that we denied a little while ago. They had an accessory building. Mr. Mandiel has contacted the town council, and he said that we can't do anything about it. It creates a zoning violation, but that is up to the zoning enforcement officer to do something after. We have no right to deny it under the Form A criteria. So does anyone have any question on the board about that?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McGee?
In just looking at the notes on the plan, it reads, "Parcell A shall not be used or available for use as the site of one or more buildings under the Town and Middleborough zoning bylaws." So I just, for the public, it states specifically on the plan that it is not to be used for, as the site of one or more buildings. But yet, there is an existing garage and a greenhouse and a shed already located on the property. So I just, for the record, I just wanted it to be noted that this Form A, if we approve it, doesn't conform to the zoning bylaws.
Okay. I don't know if anyone else listening has the same problem, but I couldn't even tell whether it was Ms. McGee or Ms. Bradley saying that, and the voice was awful, but-
Okay, it was, it was Ms. McGee.
You have to look like-
Okay.
Okay. So, okay, I was reading the note-
That's a little better.
Okay. Reading the note on the plan, it states, "Parcell A shall not be used or available for use as the site of one or more buildings under the Town and Middleborough zoning bylaws." However, as it exists right now, there's an existing garage, greenhouse, and shed. So it, it states that it, you know, it can't under the zoning bylaws, but yet, if we approve it, we'll be approving a lot that doesn't meet the zoning bylaws. So, just for the record.
Okay. Ms. Bradley, do you want to talk to this, whether you believe it should be endorsed or not?
No, I think it should be endorsed because we are not speaking to what is allowed under the zoning bylaw for the Form A approval. You stated it at the beginning of this, that it's a zoning issue, not a planning board issue, and that is exactly what town council had stated as well.
Right. That's what, I mean, it does say building, it probably should say dwelling, but I guess with any more discussion by any of the board members? With no more discussion, oops, did somebody say something? With no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion. Would someone like to make a motion to endorse the plan to land 121 Old Center Street, Middleborough M.A., by OPEC Engineering dated March 11, 2021?
Tombo.
Who said that one?
Bill. It's a tombo.
Okay, I got a motion by Bill Vista Gasso. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second on the motion? Second by Mr. Frally. Roll call, vote. Mr. Gasso?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Nay.
Ms. McGee?
Nay.
Mr. Frally?
Aye.
And chair votes, aye. So it passes three to two. On to our second Form A, Atwood Ave., MAP 61B lot 735. This is also a recent little, in your packet, you should see a letter dated April 26, 2021. I asked Mr. Mandiel to write this. So there was a meeting, Alan Atwood Ave., to review the sufficient width and grade of the roadway. Present at the meeting were our members Alan Frally, Jack Healy, Jeff Youngquist, attorney Michael O'Shaughnessy, Bill Logan, and representative, well, Bill Logan was the representative to the owner. They walked Atwood Ave. from Chestnut Street to the two Form A lots. They discussed narrow areas of the roadway and measured several sections for width, the width averaged from 15 to 21 feet. Several trees were directly on the edge of the pavement, and many areas had deteriorated pavement, creating potholes in on the side of the roadway. Many sections of the road had built up sand durned leaves further narrowing the width. It was determined that the entire frontage of the two lots would have an extra five feet of pavement added to the width of the road. It was further agreed upon, potholes and soft sides of the roadway will be filled in, scraping and removal of debris along the sides of the road will be completed to maximize the useful surface and width of the roadway. These improvements will be from Chestnut Street entrance to Atwood Ave. to the end of the two lots. It was agreed to plan of the roadway, deeply on the improvements will be fed by OPEC Engineering and presented to the planning board in a new application for Form A, if a new application for Form A is made. We have that in our packet. So does anyone have any questions about that?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McGee?
In reading the memo about the conversation, I think, let's see, the second paragraph, the second sentence, it says, "It was further agreed." I don't believe that Mr. Healy and Mr. Frally entered into an agreement with the people on this, on behalf of the planning board. I think it was probably proposed that they would take care of the potholes and the soft sides, but I think agreed is not the right word, because the planning board did not agree on this.
Okay. I heard about half of that again. It's, and I, I had a zoning board meeting last Thursday night, and it's absolutely terrible to have Zoom meetings, half in and half out. We'll discuss that later, but-
All right. I will try to re, I will try to rephrase-
I got the gist of the conversation, so-
Okay.
Is there any?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. McGee.
Okay. Mr. Frally and Mr. Healy did not enter into an agreement with the applicants on behalf of the planning board, so I think the word agreed is a little strong. Suggested is probably a better word, but there was no agreement on behalf of the planning board. So I just wanted to make that clear. I also had a question-
Yes, we can carry that.
And also about the extra five feet of pavement added to the width of the road along the entire frontage of the two lots. I, that will solve some of the problems with the two lots, but what happens to the rest of the road? Does it solve the problems going forward or out? Or is it only solving the problem in front of these two lots?
No, actually, did you look at the plan that was in, I know it was on Dropbox, that's where I looked at it. The plan shows several areas that they will widen. The applicant has agreed to do some block topping and cleaning the roadway, and I believe that it does satisfy us, I guess, to either Mr. Frally or Mr. Healy. Would you like to talk to that subject, because you were both on the onsite?
Yeah, I think that the-
You first.
I have one question, and however, that remains in my mind. Is there going to be any effort to move at least one pole, that's telephone pole or utility pole, that's, that's significantly out into the travel way? It's about halfway down Atwood Avenue.
I would, I would ask the applicant if he'd like to talk to that or their representative.
Joe Aruda, I absolutely will reach out to Middleboro Gas and Electric and have that one pole moved. That's not a problem at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aruda.
Thank you.
Any discussion, Mr. Frally, are you all set?
No, I was, I was actually, I was very pleased with the discussion we had at the site meeting. The applicant certainly seemed more than agreeable to anything we suggested, and he, whatever it was in his mouth, he's right there, but he's willing to do, you know, anything within reason to make this work, so I was, I was very appreciative of that sentiment.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion by any of the board members? With that, I'd like to see if anyone has a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Frally?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Right. Would be, motion to endorse, not approve.
I'm sorry, I'm hard on that. Make a motion to endorse?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Frally. Mr. Healy, second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Gasso?
Stay. Abstain.
Mr. Healy?
In favor.
I got that, Mr. Gasso. Yep. Mr. Healy?
In favor.
Ms. McGee?
Abstain.
Okay. Mr. Frally?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. It gets passed free to one with one abstain being Mrs. McGee, so-
Mr. Chair, there were two abstentions. Two.
Excuse me?
Two abstentions.
Yeah, Bill, I abstained.
Bill, you abstained, not-
That's right.
I thought you said nay.
No, abstained. Not taking a vote either way.
Okay. Okay. Two abstentions, three in favor. Form A passes.
Thank you very much.
We have a 6:45 hearing. You're welcome, Mr. Aruda. Thank you.
Take care.
We have a 6:45 hearing. We're still on time, so, if I can find it. Okay. We have a, I'm going to open the hearing for Beach Street Retreat Lot Special Permit. I'm going to read the legal advertisement. The Middleborough Planning Board, the Middleborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, at 6:45. I'm remotely here, so relative to a retreat lot special permit pursuant to Section 4.7.4 of the zoning bylaw, which has a plan entitled Retreat Lot Special Permit Plan, Beach Street, Middleborough, Mass. 02346, dated April 16, 2021, prepared by the Phoenix Consulting Engineers LLC, 3 Main Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347. And with the note, Old Beach Investments LLC, 3 Chester Ave., Berkeley, Mass. 02779. Set rent is found on a census map, 104, lots 295 and 2011. Both plans are available on a planning permit for public review with an appointment, and also available tonically by request. Anyone desired to be heard on this subject can attend the meeting in my way by logging into the following Zoom link. With that, I open up the hearing. We have a, the applicant or his representative want to present this plan to us.
Yes, good evening, everyone. This is Tom Morris from Phoenix Consulting Engineers on behalf of Old Beach Investments LLC. We are submitting this plan for a special permit for a retreat lot. It meets all the requirements in zoning with the lot area, the untage, access width, upland area, and upland circle shape factor. It's, the wetland line has been approved by conservation, so the up, the upland area is not a concern.
Do we have any members of the board that have any questions about this lot?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Healy?
I took a ride out there, it's a little difficult to identify. I'd just like to ask the engineer, is the parcel, the street front parcel that's in front of this lot, this retreat lot, is that being, is that being cleared at this time?
Which, which portion are you talking about?
Talking about parcel 104-1068?
I'm not sure if any work is being done there. That is not, not our property.
Okay. Around, around the corner, on the other side, on the, on the other street, that this property, I think, also butts, is there a lot that's being cleared, a street front lot that's being cleared on, around the corner here?
I believe so.
Look, did you, anything? Okay. Does Mr. Baptiste want to speak on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Lots two and four are being cleared, and I believe lot one also can be moved in.
And that is your property, but not the state lot, correct?
Uh, Old Beach Investments is made up of two partners, and my other, my partner Jamie Emerson is purchasing lots one, two, and three, and he is currently working on all three of those.
Okay. Thank you. Just to orientate, no, just wanted to get oriented as to exactly where the retreat lot is in relationship to those street front lots that are being cleared on, on both roads.
Yeah, lot, so lot four on Beach Street is the one being cleared, then there's lot five, which is not being cleared at this time, and then the retreat lot.
Yeah, okay. I got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baptiste. Are there any of the board members that have any questions on this plan?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McGee?
I wanted to ask the engineer, what percent of this lot is wetlands?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What percentage, what percentage of the lot is wetlands?
Um, I don't know exactly, because I only have the upland area, the contiguous upland But it's, it's more than 50% upland, because we, we have 481,000 square feet total, and our contiguous upland in the building area is over 300,000.
Ms. McGee, if I may speak to that. Our zoning bylaw for retreat lot says that the minimum size lot has to be 400,000 square feet, and it has to have at least 200,000 square feet of contiguous upland. This one appears to have 230,000 plus feet of upland, so it, it passes that threshold.
I'm, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm aware that it passes the threshold, but I still have, wanted to ask the question, how much of this lot is wetlands? If the engineer doesn't know, then that's okay.
I don't have that number offhand.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions, or may I just-
I'm going to ask the question.
All right, this, this, let's, and then everybody, your turn. So just give me just another minute, if you could, please.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, or may I, there are the members of the board. Hearing none, now we'll take any residents of the town, so Ms. Fussell, represent me first.
Thank you. I, I am an immediate abbotter to this retreat lot, and I believe the access to it and probably the building part will wrap right around two sides of my current property. So I attended both conservation hearings, about what wetlands, you know, designated wetlands were located and all of this. I, I did submit some questions, which were supposed to have been forwarded to Zenith Engineering. They, they said they never got them. So I come forward with some of these questions again tonight. Some of them might seem to be conservation oriented, but I am concerned, we've lost a lot of woodland down here, and, and the cleared lot, which is, I just have to step out and see it down the street, is entirely cleared. It's really, there's no trees along the front left or anything. It's really, there's no trees along the front left or anything. So. I had asked if at some point if there would be a 20-foot buffer zone between the street and the lot. That clearly isn't gonna be the case. So I, I did ask in the questions which I submitted to the planning board by email last week, if, uh, it would be possible to have a, maybe a hundred-foot buffer zone between my property and wherever clearing is going to take place, in view of the kind of radical clearing that did take place on the lots that are being built now. I, I'm concerned about buffer zones for wildlife because with the bogs and the thinning of the woodland around here, there isn't a lot of passive spot for them. We're near the Wongking Pole Rod and Gun Club and the Wildlife Management Area up on Pine Street, but down this end, things are getting a little thin in terms of wood coverage for wood. I did have a couple of other questions. I submitted them via email, and I'm hoping that if they, if I, if you could kindly take some time, Zenith Engineering, to take a look at them. I was also concerned about where the wetland boundary was on the retreat lot, and if there were gonna be any permits under 510 on that. But anyway, the questions are, are there, so.
Thank you, Ms. Bliss. Uh, to Zenith Engineering, you said you did not get those, that list of questions?
Um, I'm not, that might have been during the conservation meetings that that was said. Um, I did receive a copy of this email today. So I was able to take a look at those questions.
All right. Do you have answers to that question?
Yeah, do you want me to go through each one?
Uh, yeah. Make it quick, please. Thank you.
Okay, so number one is, will the development affect the ecology of this area in any way? For example, prevent the creation of vernal pools? Short answer is no. Um, any vernal pools which would have formed, would have formed already. And it's, it's a very sandy area. We've done test pits out there. So even though there is a portion of the lot, uh, the retreat lot, that is kind of a depression, it drains very quickly. There's, there's no water that stands there. Will site work, grading, paving, home construction, et cetera, change the water table on my land? Uh, no, it will not. Um, just based on the, the size of the development, a single-family home, that's, that's not gonna be an issue. Will it affect my water table, which is a shallow dug well? Might my cellar flood? Uh, again, this kind of goes in hand. I would say no. There's not gonna be significant runoff, um, caused by this single-family home. Especially in the good soils, everything is going to infiltrate very easily and very quickly. And I believe where the building will go is lower than Mrs. Bliss's, uh, property. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't flow in that direction anyway. Uh, wetland areas one and two surround the north and west boundaries of my land. I would like to know if there are any special permits issued under 310 CMR 10.533. As of now, no, uh, and there shouldn't be. If the construction of the home is done within 100 feet of the wetlands, we will have to file a notice with intent, with conservation. At which time, any wetland issue would be brought up. But at this time, there, there are no problems with that. And none anticipated. If homes are to be fronted on the beach street, I would like to see a natural buffer, perhaps at least 20 feet in width, established along both sides of Beach Street to my property line, so as to maintain the rural character of this section of Beach Street, with any stone walls to be kept as well. In addition, uh, to the 20-foot roadside buffer, could the project provide slash maintain a 100-foot natural buffer on properties along my boundary, uh, where his and my properties butt? The 20-foot roadside buffer isn't really feasible, uh, due to the width of the access and having to fit a driveway up there. You will have at least 10 feet between the driveway and property line. That's just a part of the zoning bylaws. Um, and then for the 100-foot buffer along the property lines, the abutting property lines, uh, that would make the lot very tight and push the house back into the 100-foot buffer, uh, zone, which obviously the town would not be in favor of. And there are increased setbacks from the building to the property lines for a retreat lot anyway, so the house won't be very close. It's a minimum of 50 feet. And then just from a developer's standpoint, I would guess they would wanna do more than that because obviously more privacy is gonna be, um, more attractive to a potential buyer. Uh, and then the last question, there has been a great deal of building in this area in the last few years with a substantial impact on woodland. Would woodland buffer zones be maintained along the property lines generally to sustain local wildlife habitat? Um, while I can't speak specifically to how much they will clear in the upland area, there are significant wetlands and the 25-foot buffer to the wetlands, which cannot be cleared. And like we were saying before, is, it's close to half of the lot, uh, around 200,000 square feet of the lot. That cannot be touched under any circumstances.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Thank you. Could you, uh, would it be possible to see a representation of where the building would be in relation to my boundary line and the, in the back of my lot?
Um, sure, I can, I can share my screen and show you the plan.
Thank you.
Oh, it says host disabled, artist's screen sharing.
Mr. Medea, can you share your screen with him, or can we not do that?
Did that allow you to do it?
Uh, yes, I can do it now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is, this is Bliss's property, which the house sits somewhere in here. This is her driveway. So the access will be along the right-hand side, and then where we did the park test was roughly in this area. And typically, the, the house would be behind, so I would guess that the house would be roughly in this area here. Which is probably approximately 100 feet from the back property line of your lot.
And would the clearing start right around my property line for that lot?
Um, potentially it could, but...
Ms. Mr. Morris, I mean, if I could interrupt you for a minute, uh, to either you or your representative, because I don't want Miss Bliss to drive the lot on side 25. So our zoning bylaw says that the roadway has to be 10 feet off the lot line. They have 45 feet of frontage here. Uh, so it doesn't leave them a lot of, if the roadway is 15-foot wide, it only leaves them 30 feet, um, on both sides, uh, combined. Um, and it does say that no dwelling shall be built within 50 feet of the lot line. So I would like to ask the engineer or their representative if they could, uh, leave a 10-foot wooded buffer on Miss Bliss's sideline going up the accessway, and a 50-foot wooded buffer behind her house. So to either the applicant or the representative, um, I guess I have that question.
Uh, so the 10-foot along the driveway, I have no problem with. This lot is under agreement with the customer already, and I don't know exactly what their plans are. 50 feet is a significant strip of land. Could we settle at 25 foot?
Um, let me, Miss Bliss, what is your opinion of that?
I was, well, I, since I was asking for 120, I don't know. It, it's, uh, believe it or not, the woods, just with the cleared lot down the road, it's thinned out so much, I can't. I, I'm just concerned about loss of woodland. That really does trouble me, even more, even if I didn't live here, it would trouble me. So I really not, I'd liked it to be 50, if that's possible. I don't know how much space, you know, how much, does that push you too close to wetland on the north side?
Uh, I don't think, I mean, it appears that they might have close to 200 feet from the lot line to the wetland line. Um, so if you took 50 foot away and even got a 50-foot house in there, um, what the septic system, you know, and they could be closer than 100 feet. Um, I think they could get the 50 foot. So I guess to Mr. Baptiste, do you think that that is too much of a problem to do?
Well, again, it's under agreement already. Um, I don't know what his exact plans are. I will say that the retreat lot provides more protection than any of the other alternatives because obviously a subdivision there, there'd probably be three, maybe four lots that the houses could be right up to the property line. Uh, at least with the retreat lot, the structure has to be 50 feet away. So, you know, I understand there's a, there is a, you know, she's, Miss Bliss's had woods behind her forever. Um, so this is a, a change which is never easy, but a retreat lot does offer the most protection out of any of the alternatives. And it's the least invasive out of any of the choices that are on the table.
And, and there's no question about that, but it also is a special permit. Uh, we have a neighbor here that is, um, asking for 100. I think that maybe 50 feet is a good compromise. Uh, but I'll go to the board members. Any board members have any opinion on this? So I'll open it up to the board members for discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McGee?
To the engineer, what's the topography like out there?
Um, so as you come off the road, uh, it kind of goes up and down along the access. Um, and then as you get back into the lot where we have the upland circle, there is a, a depression. There's kind of a, a berm along Mrs. Bliss's property line, and then back up toward the wetland, it comes back up again before it goes down to the wetland. Relatively, the, the lot in the building area is fairly flat. Uh, it, it goes up and down, but overall relatively flat.
And what is the, um, topography in relation to where the septic system's gonna be located in relation to Miss Bliss's property? Where's it gonna flow?
The existing topography is a little bit lower in that area. Um, I don't remember exactly what the water table was there. But I would assume it's, it's probably gonna be built up a little bit, just so that the house isn't sitting in that depression.
So are you saying that the septic system is going to flow to Miss Bliss's property or back to the owner's house?
Uh, well, it's neither. Uh, it's, it's just going straight into the ground, and then it kind of flows out in every direction. But in general, the groundwater is heading toward the wetland.
Um, what, what is the perk rate?
I believe it was a less than two, but I can check that real quick, actually. I think I have them.
To Ms. McGee, um, I, I would think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the
Yep.
septic system would be in the front of this house. Is that correct, Mr. Morris?
Yes, yeah, typically that's how we do it, and where we did the park, that would make sense to put the house behind it.
Right, so the septic system would be closest to Miss Bliss's house. So that the building would be behind it.
Correct.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Um, anything else, Ms. McGee?
No, that's it.
Okay, any other board members have any opinion on the buffer zone between the Bliss property and Old Beach Street property?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Bill?
Mr. Gasso?
Yeah, uh, I believe that, uh, they don't have to give any, any buffer, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want...
There, there has to be a 50-foot buffer for the dwelling, but it doesn't say that they have to leave a tree buffer.
That's right. I just want that clear for the public to understand that. They don't have to give them buffer. They can kind of be tree right up to the property line.
Good, okay, thank you. Um,
Mr. Chair?
I'll open it up to any of the residents, um, that wanna talk on this matter. Um, Ms. Bliss, do you have anything else to say?
No, I, you know, I, I do have one other. The lot five, is that the lot that's already been cleared on the road here?
No, lot four has been cleared.
I see, so there's gonna be additional clearing between, it's gonna be, seem pretty decimated, I gotta tell you. Not, I'm just, I'm not happy about it, and I do respect, you know, Mr. Baptiste's business and so forth, but this is, it really is, I mean, it, it looks awful. So I don't have any more, but I would like to see as much of a buffer, you know, I would really, really appreciate, as much of a buffer as they can be.
Okay, uh, to Mr. Baptiste, and I think part of it probably is a curb radius to the corner. Do you think we can get to 40 feet and have a curb radius from the corner so that your driveway can go up and into the house?
Um, with you 35, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm really trying. You know, where I already have a customer, and there was no restriction, um...
Now, I, I understand, Mr. Baptiste, so to Miss Bliss, we, 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 it's gotten viewed to 35 feet. Um, I guess they don't have to give us anything. Uh, we don't necessarily have to approve the special permit, but they have uh, conformed to all the requirements, um, of the special permit. So you're getting 10 feet on the driveway, which I think is more than generous, because I think they're gonna have to push that driveway all the way over to lot five. All the cutting will be from lot fives, even though the driveway's 15-foot wide, if they give you 10 feet, they're gonna have to cut at least another 10 foot, so they're gonna probably be 5 feet, if not right up to the property line on lot five with the cutting for the driveway. So I think you're getting 10 feet on the driveway and 35 feet behind it. I would like to say that, and to be sure, parcel B is not part of this retreat lot, correct, Mr. Baptiste?
That is correct.
So you are not offering any no-cut zone on parcel B at this time, correct?
That is correct, but it, it would be a non-buildable parcel anyhow.
Yep, okay, so, uh, Ms. Bliss, I think we've gotten as far as we can get with it. It's up to the members to decide um, whether that is fair or unfair, I guess. Last call for anyone that would like to talk on this special permit for Old Beach Street LLC.
Mr. Chairman, Bill?
Uh, Mr. Gasso?
Yeah, that dri, that driveway has to be 10 feet from either property lines. You can't put it, you can't, you can't push it right up against five. It has to still stay 10 feet away from...
That's correct.
Okay, just so...
But they could, it doesn't say that they could cut.
That's right, they could, but the driveway...
Physically cut the 40-foot width all the way down and put the driveway down the center. So we're giving Miss Bliss a 10-foot buffer of a no-cut zone. Um, so, you know, it's gonna be no cut for 10 feet, probably 5 feet cutting, then the driveway will be, so there'll still be 10 feet from the other property line, but they will probably have to... to cut pretty near the whole width of that, except Miss Bliss's ten-foot no-touch, you know, buffer zone.
All right.
So, you know, I, I think we have, you know, it's no problem for the driveway, and it's that you still have to cut trees to get it away from the driveway so that you can still traverse down it.
Right.
So hearing no other comments from the general public or planning board members-
Mr. Chair.
Um, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I did have one comment, um, in regards to the fifty-foot buffer zone to the rear of the property. Um, I understand that the applicant has met all the requirements, but, um, I'm getting tired of hearing that they've met all the requirements, and there's a difference between meeting all the legal requirements and doing the right thing for abuddies and for the environment. So I would really love to see a fifty-foot butter, buffer zone, um, between the Bliss property and this house. Um, you know, we, we keep cutting down the trees, and we're cutting and we're cutting, and we're complaining that we're seeing bears and deer are eating all your plants, and you're getting all kind of vermin in your house, and if we keep doing this, Middleborough is gonna be a clear-cut town and there isn't gonna be an animal around, so I, for one, um, would absolutely love to see a fifty-foot buffer zone there. There's a difference, do the right thing for the neighbors and the environments versus having a little extra lawn.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Baptiste.
Uh, just to reiterate, this property could have had three or four more lots with a roadway, um, for numerous reasons, we decided to go with this plan, which is five formas and one retreat lot, but it is a significantly less intrusive plan than what was possible. Um, I know it appears that there are a lot of trees being cut down, but when you look at the total acreage of this property, a significant portion is going to stay vegetated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baptiste.
I'd like to make one comment, too.
Mr. Morris?
The, the larger the buffer we provide between Mrs. Bliss and the retreat lot, um, it's just going to push the development of the lot further back toward the wetland, um, which is going to cause more clearing within the buffer zone there. Um, so you're kind of gaining it on one side and losing it on another, and I would assume that the town, especially Conservation Commission, would like to see more wood on the backside toward the wetland.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, so I guess what you're saying is, uh, we're protecting Miss, Miss Bliss's property more, but we're maybe harming the environment more?
Correct, and I, I do, I do agree that, I mean, it is nice to have that buffer, um, between the abutting property, but there's definitely a break-even point where you're kind of losing something on the backside with that environmental impact.
Okay, at this point, um, Ms. Bliss, go ahead.
Was it not so, though, that you, uh, you needed two hundred thousand square feet for that, but you had two hundred and thirty thousand, so I didn't think that would impact that? Am I wrong about that?
Well, it's, that's not the area that we would be clearing, um, it, the two hundred thousand is just a requirement for the upland area on the lot. We wouldn't be clearing that entire area. I mean, typically, a lot will clear maybe an acre, um, which is just over forty thousand square feet. So if we're clearing that acre, if we have twenty-five feet between your property and the retreat lot, it brings that acre a little bit further away from the wetland, but if we get fifty feet, then it just pushes it back further, and they're gonna clear the same amount either way.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chair?
Um-
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McGee, Mr. Gasso.
Yeah, uh, can I ask Miss Bliss, or Mrs., whatever it is, how much, where her house is, how much did she leave from the back property line? The back of your house, how far from the edge of the property line is it?
Miss Bliss, do you know how far your house is from your rear property line? Approximately? Miss Bliss, do you, do you around you?
I think it's about, I'm not sure, I think it's, it's about a hundred feet.
Thank you.
So you already have a hundred-foot buffer of, of your own property, would you tell me?
Right, but, but my point wasn't how much, you know, buffer I have on my property, it's woodland, that, that was my point. It was existing woodland, because I do have some woodland on the back of my property, it's, it's, on one side, on the west side of my property, it's also wetland, it's an old bog, and there's water that runs through there, so, you know, I had a box turtle there the other day, so there are deer that come through here, turkey and stuff, there's, you know, I'm just thinking how thin this, these woods are getting, and that's really my concern. I, I do believe, you know, I, I was really, I, you know, I know there's a lot of building going on in Middleborough, and once these woodlands are gone, they're gone. So it's, it's not so much how much woodland I have there, it's what's not going to be there, and, and when you think about all the bogs around here, they're not great traverse spots for wildlife as it is, they're not, you know, they don't encourage deer to run across their boggy land. And, and so that, there are a lot of bogs right in back of me anyway, also in back of me, there's a, a gravel operation's been going on for quite a while, so there's a lot of cleared land back there. If you drive up Beach Street toward Time Street, there's a very thin strip of woodland left before you get to bogs and the gravel operation. So this is, you know, when you look at this plot from Google Earth, right on this corner and in back of me has been the last bit of any kind of concentrated woodland in this, on this stretch, and, and, and that's gonna be gone, so that's, that's really my concern. So I'm, I'm not just trying to, even if, really, truly, even if I weren't living here, it would bother me, so that's why I'm asking about this buffer. Thank you, I won't, I don't have any more questions, I, I've kind of put my thoughts out there, and then I guess it's up to the determination of the planning board, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bliss, uh, we appreciate neighbors coming in and discussing it. Um, I'm gonna take a roll call vote just on the thirty-five to fifty-foot buffer, how many people feel very strongly about it, so I'll ask Mr. Gasso first.
Are, are you asking me if I'm in favor of the buffer?
Um, do you think, I'm, I'm asking you, do you think you may not want to approve this special permit if he doesn't, uh, if you don't get a fifty-foot no-cut buffer?
I don't think he has to give any buffer, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Healy?
Um, I'd certainly like to see the thirty-five foot buffer as a minimum.
Thank you. Ms. McGee?
Um, personally, I would like to see a fifty-foot buffer, um, but I understand that it would impact the conservation land in the rear, so, um, thirty-five would be the minimum I'd like to see.
Okay, Mr. Fowley?
Um, I, I mean, well, to me, I'd, I'd like to see a hundred-foot buffer, but I don't think we're, I think we're starting to get into a larger conversation about what we can and can't do. Um, I, I, I'm a tree hugger, I, I love chasing the deer and the turkeys and seeing them and all that stuff, but the zoning laws, if we want to protect more space, we have to change the zoning law, we can't do that block by block and form A by form A and, and, you know, it's, we're gonna get into a lot of trouble if we start doing these things. Um, if we want to have a larger discussion about changing the zoning laws, I'm more than happy to do that, but I, I think we're, we're treading on, on thin ice when we start to talk about that with each and every lot that cuts a tree down. Um, I'd be more than happy with the thirty-five foot buffer at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowley. Um, the chairman will just, uh, I'd like to say that whether it's thirty-five feet back or fifty feet back, um, they're probably gonna cut a certain amount of area, and let's just say it's a hundred by a hundred, so if they were thirty-five feet back, it would just mean that they're closer to the street, if they're fifty feet back with the cutting, it just means they're gonna cut the same amount of woodland, it's just gonna be back a little further. So I guess, um, I understand, uh, Mr. Baptiste's problem that he has the lot under agreement, um, and I do agree that I'd like to see a fifty-foot buffer, but nothing is mandated, so thirty-five is better than nothing. Um, so I would make, I would have the opinion that thirty-five is sufficient. So, Mr. Baptiste, do you, um, satisfied with the four votes out of five? Do you want us to continue with your thirty-five foot, um, proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Baptiste. All right, last call for any other questions about Old Beach Street Realty Trust Retreat Lot. Hearing done, um, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I'd make a motion to approve the retreat lot special permit plan for Beach Street, Middleborough, Massachusetts, owner, Old Beach Investments LLC, Three Chester Avenue, Berkeley, Mass, drawn by Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC, dated April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, including the requirement of a thirty-five foot buffer along the rear property line of the Bliss property.
Thank you. Second by Ms. McGee, second by Mr. Healy, roll call vote, Mr. Gasso.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Wait, I, I didn't close the hearing yet. Um, so I, I'm looking for a motion to, Tracy, could you amend your motion to close the hearing first?
Yes, I, I'll amend my motion to close the hearing, and then the motion with a correction to include the ten-foot buffer zone along the driveway adjacent to Miss Bliss's property.
Thank you. Mr. Healy, do you second that?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, um, roll call vote, Mr. Gasso.
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye, ma'am.
Ms. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Fowley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, Mr. Baptiste, there, Ms. Morris, you're all set, uh, the, the planning department will do your approval and get it to the, um, town clerks, and then your appeal period will stop.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
Nice to talk to you, Ms. Bliss.
Thank you.
Always nice to talk to the neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
You're welcome. Um, next we have a seven o'clock hearing, but I don't want people hanging around if they don't have to, um, so I'd like to know if someone wants to make a motion to take the Great Cedar Village off Fuller Street out of order.
I'm on this, yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Healy, do we hear a second?
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Fowley, roll call vote, Mr. Gasso?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ms. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Fowley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Uh, we have a memorandum here from Mr. Snyder, um, and Mr. Youngquist, and it, I will read it into the record. I, Elliot Snyder, is owner of Great Cedar Village proposed subdivision, requesting extension to the first meeting in July to review the submission of requested changes to the proposed plan requested by the review engineer for the project. I further request the board extend the deadline for review of the project another six months from June twenty-second deadline for additional six months, for whatever time period the board finds appropriate. Sincerely, Elliot Snyder. We have a representative here for Mr. Snyder tonight.
Yes, you do.
Mr. Youngquist, uh, do you want to go over, uh, what Mr. Snyder would like?
Well, you're just, you already said it, he needs a six-month extension and we'll take the, we should have the plan done by the, and reviewed by the review engineer by the first meeting in July, so that's what, that's what we're-
Okay, so, so he's asking for a six-month extension of the, uh, approval or denial of the project, but you're still working on it, and you want a meeting in July, or you want this continued to July to get the, uh, changes requested in a proposed plan in, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Youngquist. To the planning department, um, Ms. Bradley, do you have anything to comment on this proposed extension?
Uh, no, I just wanted to give the dates, the extension of time would be to December twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-one, and then, and then the continuance date would be July sixth.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do any board members have any comment on this extension request? Um, hearing done, do we have any people that, uh, neighbors and our general, uh, people that want to comment on this proposal?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Pinto, um, we're a major property that aligns with Great Cedar Village proposal. I wasn't able to attend the April meeting, but I was around from March. Um, and my understanding was, I thought everything was, they had their plans, so what are we, what are we, what happened in April that they needed to reconfigure?
Ms. Pinto, um, I will, I will answer that-
Thank you.
-generally out of the engineer, but what, what is, happens is, we have a review engineer that goes through everything, um, the only thing we did vote on at the first meeting was that they could have the basins on the lots that they were building on, not on separate lots, uh, but there was a lot of questions by our review engineer, uh, those questions have not been fully answered yet, and what they're asking for is a continuance until they were gonna, if we do it, we'll set it on July sixth, that there'll be another hearing. Um, on July sixth, we'll, we'll go through the plans, make sure our engineers are all set, uh, but often that isn't the last hearing, so what they're asking is that, uh, we continue or if they're continuing the extension of time, we have to decide this till December twenty-second, with a little luck, it may be done in August or September, but it certainly gives us plenty of time not to worry about extending again. So, uh, it's more review engineers debating with the engineer of record for Mr. Snyder, um, when they get all the questions solved from the review engineer, they will be back on July sixth, and, um, you know, you never know, we, we could be okay with it at that point, but he's asking to, um, have the completion date for the, you know, the extension to December twenty-second, gives us plenty of time. So, any other questions?
Is this common?
Uh, yeah, actually, a lot of times we have developers coming in, if he was extending his next meeting to July sixth, he would only extend, you know, not much farther than that would be, uh, approval or denial, the problem happens then that if they don't get it done, we keep putting it off and putting it off and keep asking him for extensions, so it goes from one extension to another to another, so he's just, I think he's just making sure that, uh, gives us plenty of time to make a decision on this, especially if any of the neighbors come in, um, and disagree with findings of the review engineer, it gives us plenty of time to make that decision.
I guess that is, my final question is, when do I bring up my concerns then if there is an extension proposal on the table?
Um, about the extension itself, you can bring them up tonight, um, about the project, you could bring them up tonight, and it would be better to- About the project, you could bring them up tonight, and it would be better to give all your comments tonight because they will be in the record and at least the review engineer, the engineer of record, or Mr. Snyder can hopefully answer your questions before the next meeting. So the floor is yours. You could go ahead and give us anything you got.
So we're at 148 Fuller Street. We border the property, the back lot, from our southern back point of the property to the north end. It really fluctuates, I can see from the last few years. We've been here probably 12 years. The water table is a real concern. There's a lot of wetlands back there that I know people have talked about. Over my time, I have seen standing water for much of the time going mainly on the south end of the property. As the north end, you can tell the elevation changes and you don't see so much standing water. So my concern is definitely our southern point of the houses that will be placed there. I just cannot visualize a house going on top of what I have seen of the standing water. I have a hard time viewing that. I would definitely need an explanation on how that is possible. I also have, since the first perk test, I believe, started in 2017, since all that heavy machinery came in from my property line, I have a great visual. So I started to take pictures and I do have visuals of standing water. When should I bring, and who do I bring that to, is my visual concerns, just not me voicing it. I also seen the eastern box turtles. I want to know, you know, how the Natural Heritage and Endangered Deterrents Program has played a role in this, you know, in the plan. And, I don't know, it definitely would change this whole integrity of our home. Our home was built, it's one of the old, on Fuller Street, built in the 1700s. It's definitely heavily wooded and it would just feel out of place. This is such a development, concentrated development going behind such a wooded area. So I would just, I'd like some explanations on if this is natural for Middleborough to do. I mean, this is very new to me. I haven't seen too much drastic change on my part of Fuller Street, especially our backyard. You know, I would like, you know, explanations on, this is common, this isn't common, what would need to be done and what we're going to protect. That's my initial thing that comes to mind at this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pinto. I'll answer a couple of questions, then I'll give it back to the engineer. This will go in front of the Conservation Commission for a wetland find and every dwelling probably have a wetland filing. Natural Heritage would be part of that filing. You have to file with Natural Heritage when they file with Conservation. So that would also, that is their part of this. About the visual part, you can email them or drop them off to the Planning Department. They will put them in our packet. Any comments you have would be nice to either email or put in writing to the Planning Department so that we have them, would be in our packets, would be in front of us at every meeting. So that would, anytime you want, you can call the Planning Department and talk to anyone, including the town planner, and she will give you as much information as she can. So I'd like to turn it over to the engineer of record. Is there anything you would like to say to Ms. Pinto's comments?
No, I, we noted them.
Okay. Ms. Bradley from the Planning Department, do you have any comments on that?
Not at this time. If Ms. Pinto has comments or photographs, please feel free to forward them to the office.
Okay. To Ms. Pinto, we do have subdivision rules and rights. They will have to adhere to all the subdivision rules and rights. I can say also from the conservation aspect, they have their rules and rights and they'll have to adhere to all those, including setbacks. We have a 25-foot no-take zone to the wetlands, which is actually governed by the SLCC, it's a WRBD Water Resource Protection District bylaw. So we have some protections in there, but there's no question about it that the very nice tree area that you have behind your house will probably not look anything like it looks today. So we do what we can, but we are governed by the law. We can only, you know, have them do so much. So I would like to say that. Has any of the board members got any comment? Hearing none, is there any other comments from the general public? Okay, hearing none, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I'll make a motion that we extend the hear, or continue the hearing till July 6, 2021. Do we have a time?
It could be 6:45.
And that's for Great Cedar Village off of Fuller Street, correct?
Correct, and that we extend, and that we approve the request for extension of time for the special permit through December 22, 2021.
Okay, this is actually just for a subdivision, not a special permit. So just so we can correct that. But I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Healy, second. Roll call vote. Mr. Gasso.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Ms. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Fawley.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. To Ms. Pinto, we'd appreciate anything you could bring to the Planning Department and/or email, any questions you have, certainly if you can put them in writing, it's better. We will give them to Ms. Youngquist so that he can either write comments and give them back to the board and/or be prepared for the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Joe Mandiel.
So we, this meeting is continued to July 6, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, Joe Mandiel.
Ms. McGee, Mr. Gasso?
No, Joe Mandiel.
Oh, Mr. Mandiel.
I have a question to Ms. Youngquist. If we're going to have a meeting on the 6th, what's your date that you anticipate you would have your questions answered for the peer review?
We're trying to get the final plans to the peer review by the end of the week. So that's, how many weeks it takes him to get back to it, and there'll be some more give and take. So I would venture to say we would know by the third week in July, come soon, you know, where we are. But it looks like we're going to, we're planning on giving it to the review engineer by the end of the week.
By the end of this week, you should be able to move it to them.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandiel. Any other comments or questions from the board members and/or the department? Okay, with that, we're all set with Great Cedar Village. We had a 7 o'clock hearing for a Retreat Lot Special Permit. So read the legal appetizer. Middleborough Planning Board, the Middleborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing Tuesday, June 14th at 7:00 p.m. Remotely, the Zoom will address Retreat Lot Special Permit pursuant to Section 7.4 of the zoning bylaw. They show a plan entitled Retreat Lot Special Permit Plan 121 Old Southern Street, Middleborough, Mass., 02346, dated March 9, 2021, prepared by Outback Engineering Incorporated, 165 East Grove Street, Middleborough, Mass., 02346, prepared for the applicant, owner William Stanley, 59 Temple Brook Drive, Middleborough, Mass., 02346. Set land assigned on a census map, 28, Lot 3173. Full plans available in the Planning Department, public review with an appointment, and also available electronically by request. Anyone desiring to be heard on this subject can attend the meeting remotely by logging into the following Zoom link. With that being said, I open up the hearing to the applicant or their representative.
Yes, that's me, Jeff Youngquist, Outback Engineering.
Ms. Youngquist.
This is the other half of the lot that you signed the form at this morning, this evening. Basically, we have 320,870 square feet of this. 294,314 square feet are uplands, and if you subtract it two, it's 26,503 feet of wetlands. Basically, we're proposing a single-family home. I do believe you have the plan in front of you. The plan has already been in front of the Concom and it's been approved.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Let me ask first the Planning Department. Ms. Bradley, do you have comments on this plan?
I do not. The only question I had was if it had been to Conservation yet, but I just got that answer.
Okay, Ms. Youngquist.
Yes.
You've been to Conservation, I take it, are they still in the hearing process or where are they on with that?
I think my son told me that we closed the hearing.
Okay. Any other questions, any members of... Okay, any other questions or any members of the board? Hearing none, are there any questions from the general public that would like to speak on 121 Old Southern Street Retreat Lot Special Permit? Hearing none.
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Is there anyone that has any questions on this lot?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Can I ask how the Natural Heritage boundary affects the construction and the location of the improvements?
Certainly. Ms. Youngquist.
What was the question again?
I see there's a Natural Heritage boundary line on the plan. How does that affect the improvements, the driveway, et cetera, if at all?
Basically, all that means is where we had to file with them, which we did, and we addressed any comments Conservation or anybody else had on this issue. All it means, it's part of that's the have a test and you require the file.
And have they issued a decision on the filing?
I don't have the answer to that right now, but usually they don't.
Because I'd be interested to find out if this is a no-take or if you're going to have to do something for them.
Ms. Youngquist.
I don't have any correspondence from National Heritage in my file, so we filed with them more than 30 days ago.
Let me try to answer this. Ms. McGee, just one of the things Conservation does is before they will close a hearing, they will absolutely have a letter from Natural Heritage stating what they want, and they make sure that whatever Natural Heritage wishes, the concerns are met before they will close the hearing and issue an order of conditions. So generally, and I understand your concern, but generally Conservation makes sure that the Natural Heritage people, they either have a letter of no-take or conditions and they make sure that the conditions are met. Okay, any other questions? I see Chloe Dykpat has a handout. Would you like to talk? Do you need to state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I'm the owner of the property and we already got all our approvals with Natural Heritage and Conservation.
Okay, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Tiffany Stanley, 59 Temple Brook Drive in Middleborough.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Could I ask through you to Ms. Stanley, what did National Heritage say?
Ms. Stanley, would you like to answer that?
We're trying to pull up the email now. They basically just gave us parts on the land we can't touch and where we can build, and that's where Jason put the outline.
Ms. McGee, generally, what Natural Heritage does is if you look on the plan and there's a limit of clearing, they take the plan and they say, you know, the limit of clearing is as far as you can go. I believe this had a no-take letter as long as the clearing went no farther than it currently shows on the plan. So if they do any more clearing than they have shown on the plan, they have to go back to Natural Heritage for that clearing.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Is it not profitable to request applicants to provide the Planning Board with a copy of any letters that are received from Natural Heritage on any project so that we can see for ourselves what Natural Heritage is saying?
It certainly could be asked, and I think they would provide that. So I don't think that's a problem.
Any correspondence that we have is go through the Conservation Department, Conservation Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Could I ask Ms. Bradley if you could obtain a copy of the Natural Heritage letter for this property so we can at least see what they had to say?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak to that, Ms. Youngquist?
No, I have no problem. It's public record.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on the Retreat Lot for 121 Old Southern Street in Middleborough, Mass. from the board members or the general public? Hearing none, I'd be looking for a motion. I think that if we're waiting for a letter, there's only one motion that can be made.
I have a copy, I'm looking at a copy of the letter right now. I could email it right now.
Okay, the...
Would you want to read that out loud?
We probably wouldn't get that.
Mr. Chair.
And Ms. Bradley.
Could she read the portion of the letter that talks about it being a take or a no-take or what the action was so that we really don't need to hold this up? I mean, this really isn't a requirement of approving a Retreat Lot.
Ms. Stanley, can you read the gist of the letter?
Yes, it says, so the first part's not really. So it says, "Based on a review of the information that was provided and the information that is currently contained in our database, the Division has determined that this project, as currently proposed, will not result in a prohibited take of state-listed rare species. This determination is a final decision of the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife pursuant to 321 CMR 10-18. Any changes to the proposed project or any additional work behind that shown on the site plans may require an additional filing with the Division pursuant to the MESA. This project may be subject to further review if no physical work is commenced within five years from the date of issuance of this determination." years from the date of issuance of this determination, or there is a change to the project."
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Stanley.
Thank you. Are you all set now, Ms. McGee?
Yes, I am, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, um, the one thing I guess I'd like to say, um, to Ms. Stanley is just to, that she understands that the limit of clearing shown on this plan is what Natural Heritage agreed to, and that if you clear any more land that is shown other than where the clearing is, you must repower Natural Heritage. Do you understand that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
I'd make a motion to approve the Retreat Lot Special Permit Plan at 121 Old Center Street in Middleborough, Mass., drawn by Outback Engineering Incorporated of 165 East Grove Street, Middleborough, Mass., dated March 9, 21, 2021 as presented. And to close the hearing.
Okay, um, do I hear, can you amend that to close the hearing first?
Okay, I'll amend my motion to close the hearing first, and then my foregoing motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Healy, second. Uh, I have a motion, a second, pro-call vote, Mr. Gassano.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Ms. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Prawley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the Retreat Lot for 121 Old Center Street is approved to the applicant. The planning board will get the approval ready, um, get signatures, get it down to the town clerk, um, and then your 28th day, your period will stop. So, we're all set with that. Um, we're going on to other 40-hour revision John Glass Square Sub District. Serpent, Ms. Bradley, could you speak to that?
Um, yes, I, I think there should be somebody here from, oh, there we go. I see Jed. Jed Cornoch is here from Serpent as well.
How you doing, Mr. Cornoch?
Very good. Hope everyone can hear me.
Yeah?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Good to see everybody tonight. Um, I'll make it brief, considering the latest of the hour. The good news here is that the Department of Housing and Community Development submitted a letter of conditional approval, or eligibility, I should say, for the 40-hour district, or the 40-hour zoning. There was one wrinkle that they indicated in their edits to the zoning itself, and that is specific to the John Glass Square Sub District. In the sub-district, as you remember, there are two. There's one right near the train station and John Glass Square. The train station sub-district was zoned at a certain density and land use types, so those, that density was 20 units per acre, which according to the 40-hour regulations indicates that you can allow multifamily dwelling units or multifamily residential. At John Glass Square, the indication from the board was to zone that district at eight units per acre. And unfortunately, what DHCD noticed was that the language that we included in the bylaw, oversight on our part, indicated that you wanted to see multifamily residential there. The two of them don't go together according to the 40-hour regulations, the state regulations. So to kind of back off and give you sort of a 30,000-foot view, it's three densities, and those three densities go along with three land use types. So the first being eight units per acre, that's single-family. 12 units per acre, that's two and three-family. And 20 units per acre at multifamily, that's exactly what they describe it. And that's anything in their definition is basically greater than three units. So what we wanted to do, because there was that discrepancy at John Glass Square, we wanted to bring it back to the planning board to have one final look at it, to make sure that we have this zoning bylaw correct. And so the question before you tonight is, at John Glass Square, do you want to allow single-family, multifamily, I'm sorry, single-family, two- or three-family, or multifamily land use up at that district? And once you decide on that one of the three, that will issue the corresponding unit-per-acre density that will be allowed at that, at that area.
No.
That's the main issue, and then, of course, there were other comments provided in the zoning bylaw, which, in our opinion, and we consulted with BN, are very minor. They're just simple tweaks that DHCD had provided. But this one is sort of a, one that rose to the level of having the planning board have a discussion, ask questions of Serpent, and make a final determination before you hold your public hearing, and then go to town meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley.
Um, I just wanted to also add that in the John Glass Square section of town, most of the residences are two- and three-family homes, so this would fit in nicely, rather than having it zoned for single families, and definitely not an area for multi-families. But for two- and three-family homes, I think it's, it's a good fit.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do any of the board members have any comment?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGee.
Um, so in reading the email from Bill Ryle, he's discussing the zoning incentive and density bonus payment, and so I got a little bit curious, and so I broke out the calculator and I did some math. If you're talking about 201 units, we would qualify for $350,000 zoning incentive payment. So I did the math, and in 2018, it costs the town of Middleborough $14,830.78 per student to educate. Assuming that these units are going to contain at least two bedrooms, at 14,000 a student, we could be looking at a total cost of $2,814,000, and that's based on 2018 figures, for one year of education for the additional students that this zoning area is, would bring, potentially bring into Middleborough. Now, think about it, $2,814,000 using four-year-old data, it hasn't gotten cheaper to educate students, and that's in exchange for a $350,000 zoning density bonus.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. The only thing I would say to that is that I do believe that wherever there is a 40-R, that we may get some money, which, you know, I agree is not much money. In places with 40-R, they could do a 40-B. We would get no mixed use, we would get the same amount of units probably, but they could do it under a 40-B, not a 40-R. So I guess that would be my only comment I open up to the board. Any other comments from the board, or about Ms. McGee comments? Mr. Cornoch, do you have any, any comments about Ms. McGee's comment?
Well, I, I recognize the impact that students have to the school system, most certainly. One item of caution, if you will, the recent zoning act legislation that changed not only voting parameters, which I'm sure you folks are aware of, it also indicated that there would be changes coming about in terms of NBTA communities and requiring zoning within a half-mile of transit stations, and requiring multifamily housing zoning within that half-mile. So this 40-R district, albeit, you know, mostly at the train station, will actually help satisfy that requirement, because what it sounded like to us and to other communities who we'd spoken to is that if you, as the town, do not allow by right multifamily within that half-mile, you put yourself at risk to not being eligible for state grant opportunities. And so to some, that may not, you know, be a major issue, but MassWorks is one of those grant opportunities that the state is essentially holding back for communities that don't provide that as a right zoning, which of course, this 40-R would be. So it's just a point of caution for you as you look to the future.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. McGee.
Um, I'm not referring to the train station, I'm referring to John Glass Square, and I don't know if Mr. Cornoch is familiar with that area, but like Ms. Bradley said, that area on Everett Street, Forest Street, and the streets around the Mitchell Club is just two- and three-family units. I don't believe that area is within a half-mile of the train station. I walked that area a lot, I've got it measured out pretty good. But I don't understand, if it was within a half an acre, why can't we count the current two- and three-families? There is a multi-unit apartment building that was just redone out of a medical office, there's got to be eight units in that building alone. I just, I just don't understand, a town that has a large amount of rental units located in it already, is being forced to build more rental units, to add to our school system, to strain our resources, to strain our public safety with absolutely zero money coming from the state. $350,000 is a pittance as to what it's gonna cost us to accommodate this, this residential zoning that the state is so fond of. It is an unfunded mandate, they're shoving it down our throats, they're not giving us the money. $2,800,000, based on four years ago. We're gonna need to build another school to accommodate the influx of students between the train station, and if John Glass gets going. John Glass Square has always traditionally been business. They, it, it, there haven't been homes here, there may be apartments located above the business along Center Street, but traditionally, that was a business area where people went to do their daily business. I'm a townie, I was born here, lived here my whole life, I remember going to the grocery store there, I remember going to the bank. John Glass Square would probably be better if we actually pitched it for business. We're the planning board, we need to start planning, and planning includes worrying about your school system, worrying about your resources, worrying about the effect on public safety. It's just not about building and worrying about unfunded mandates that are getting passed down through the state. This could cost the town of Middleborough millions of dollars annually.
Mr. Chair.
And there has to be a way for us to be able to tell the state, fine, we'll do it, you cough up the money.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Ms. Bradley.
Um, I'd just like to remind the board that this district was voted on by the entire planning board as being a part of the 40-R sub-districts, and I mean, I'm, I would like to see more documentation from Ms. McGee on her figures that she came up with, you know, written-out figures, and this is, her projection is for 201 units with two bedrooms with a child in each bedroom. That doesn't usually happen. I mean, I can't say it won't, but it's very highly unlikely. And I, I've just, I'm concerned with the scare tactics that are being thrown out there to the public that aren't entirely accurate. We are going to be doing community outreach to the town so that everybody has the, has accurate facts for when we go to town meeting, and that all questions have been answered.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. McGee.
I'd like to state that I am quoting the information from the Department of Education. Mass.edu, I have it right here, school and district profiles from 2018 and 2017 from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I, I take, I take, not offense, but it's not scare tactics, it's facts, it's facts. No matter what happens with the train station, if they put 800 units in there, do you mean to say that we're not gonna be looking at 400 to 500 kids coming out of 800 units of two- and three-bedroom apartments? Of course we are. Are we gonna be looking at 201 apartments? Okay, so say there's 100 kids, split it in half, that's still 1.4-plus million dollars cost to educate 100 kids. We don't know what our elementary school levels are, we don't know how much we can absorb in the middle school, we don't know the numbers for the high school. I've asked before to get these numbers, I've not been giving them. We need to know, we are the planning board, we should be on top of this stuff, we need to know what our schools can accommodate. We just built a new police station, we just built a new high school. We need to know if these zoning mandates are gonna cost us another school, and if perhaps that's what we're projecting, is there a way for us to tell the state, look, these are the number of rental units we have currently in the town within that half-mile radius? Is this good enough? We just had a brand-new apartment complex built right on Main Street, and that's within a half a mile, is this good enough? I mean, how, how much can we stretch our resources? We don't even know the answers to these questions, we don't even know what we have available. We, we still have to solve the water issue, the sewer issue, we're gonna be talking about that at our work meetings, but we need to get data, we need information, it's not scare tactics, it's saying, we don't know, and we're the planning board, and we should be planning for the future.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Um, the only comment I'll have to add is, we are starting to have work meetings, we don't seem to get much planning done amongst the members, especially at the meetings, so hopefully, the work meetings will bring out a lot of those questions and answers for us. Um, I do believe the department's doing as much as they can at this point, so you can only ask them to do as much as they can. I think they have some of that information, but certainly, and I, I do tend to disagree with the experts on this, saying that if we get 100 kids, we might only have five school-age children. But it may be what it is. I guess to find that out, we would have to go to the experts and have a consultant check the experts', um, you know, figures, but I think that it is much less than we believe it would be. I'd almost like to see if we could find out, if Lightfoot could tell us, or even some of the apartment houses we have, whether we could find out how many children are in each unit.
Mr. Chair.
To, um, Ms. Bradley, go ahead.
So the Woodlands on West Grove Street has 234 units, they have 45 children, they have 45 children in the school system, and that came from the school superintendent.
Thank you. I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying is, those, uh, it's nice to have those actual figures rather than what a consultant would say. It would appear that that is 5%, maybe just a touch more than 5% of the people in those, or the units in that building have a, a school-age child, so, um, if that is what it is, it would be, um, or I guess it's 20%. It's close to, I'd have to figure out to be sure, but, um, you know, that's what we, it would be nice to have that, can we get that for, um, maybe May proper apartments and, um... And there's one on Pierce Street. Do you think you could get that from the superintendent also?
Sure. On Pierce? Oh, you're talking about Shoe Shop Place? Yep, there's Shoe Shop and there's Star Mill.
Yep. I'm trying to think of the bigger apartment units. Certainly Woodland, I think, is probably our biggest, but if you take the largest three to five and get specifics on them, it would help us immensely.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Bradley?
No, it's Tracy. Talbot Woods.
Oh.
Talbot Woods would have a lot of children in there. The Woodlands is a more upscale apartment complex. If you looked at Talbot Woods, I have a feeling your percentage of children in there is going to be a little higher.
Okay, no problem. I mean, so that's the task we're going to put on Ms. Bradley, is why don't we get the five biggest, whether they're apartment complexes or condo units, and ask the school superintendent if they could give us a count of how many children in each unit?
Sure. You know, on the same note, but a little bit different. I mean, I need to know where we're going with this. The board voted in favor of the overlay districts. They voted in favor of the bylaw. They voted in favor of the design standards. We've been working on this for three years. It's going to town meeting in October. We need to bring this to the public, you know, for support, and I'm not confident with the board that every time this topic comes up is split down the middle and it doesn't have, it's not cohesive. I need to know what to do. I need to know to keep going forward or just pull it off the table and stop wasting everybody's time. It's very frustrating. Three years of work on this.
Mr. Fawley. You have your hand up?
Yes.
You have a floor.
It's approximately 14,800 per student as of today for the school. That's what we spend on the student. The high school was built with growth in mind. We actually patented it out a little bit, so we do have a little extra space in that school other than the projected growth. Unfortunately, the South Coast rail wasn't part of that, which put it into this zoning that was going to be tied to a train station we weren't asked about anyway. But that's just my comments on the South Coast rail and the gift that keeps on giving. I don't think it's going to be nearly as successful as they say it is. It would be at capacity on day one, so I don't think we're going to see the type of growth that we could be scared of. But this along with some other comments tonight in every meeting, and I apologize because I'm new, but it seems like we should really be addressing a lot of the things we're talking about in the master plan. Are we going to take a look at the master plan, and we're going to start looking at a new master plan? Because we're talking about doing a whole lot of planning, and I'd like to see a master plan as an outline to do all the planning that we keep talking about.
Ms. Bradley would like to speak to that?
We have a master plan. It's from 2002. It definitely needs to have an update. It's on my list of goals, and it's a master plan. Need a lot of help, need some resources to get that done, so I'm hoping next year, get to it.
It's coincidental that Jed is here, because I initially met Jed when I was running around a couple of other towns in the area, and I went to at least two master plan, planning sessions in Lakeville and in Berkeley that he attended, and Surpedad was helping both of those communities update their master plan, so he might be the guy to talk to.
Jed and I have had this conversation on multiple occasions. It's not that I don't talk about it. I talk about it all the time.
In no way, Leanne, do I think that you're the, this isn't a slight toward you in any way, shape, or form, and I'll do anything I can to help update the master plan, because I think that helps a lot of the questions that I've been hearing. And like I said, I'm new on the planning board, so I don't know what you guys have been doing for the last three, five years. But I do think we need to get serious about, you know, an updated master plan. We're talking about having planning sessions so we can get gas to these big warehouses. We've got 40R going in here. We've got overlay districts. We've got a train station. We're worried about the size of the schools. All of that should be filed under the master plan, and I think it'll help just frame the whole conversation a lot better and make it a lot easier for everyone to understand.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
Thank you, Mr. Fawley. Ms. Bradley?
No, I was saying that Alan is absolutely correct.
Okay, I rarely hear that, so thank you.
All right. Have there any other comments for planning board members and/or the general public? Hearing none, what do we want to do with this? Mr. Chair, if I may? Mr. Corner?
Thank you. Just to kind of bring the conversation back to the polls here. If you, as the board, recognize, and Tracy, Ms. McGee, I agree with you, the ranges in and around John Glass Square are generally two- and three-family structures. If you want to allow this overlay district to allow that type of use, then the direction you would take tonight is to have us amend the zoning bylaw to stipulate a density of 12 units per acre. Because again, if you want two- and three-family, you have to go with that 12 units per acre figure. If you want to stick with single-family residential up in that district, you would stay with the eight units per acre that the bylaw currently indicates. And I'm getting the sense that you folks don't want to see 20 units per acre multifamily structures up at John Glass Square, so that would, you know, again, up to the board, but my sense is that that would be off the table. So just to sort of clarify the conversation, and then just remind everyone that this, tonight's meeting is just to make sure that everyone is sort of understanding of the bylaw. The next step in the process would be a planning board public hearing, at which you would, you know, entertain questions, obviously, from the public and others, and then you would still have to go to town meeting in order for this to take effect. There's a lot of other things that have to come into play in order for development to happen, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page about that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So what is the plan here of the board tonight as to the John Glass Square sub-district? If we don't have any comment, it stays as it is in it, and with the 20 units per acre, I believe, is that not correct, Mr. Cornack?
No, it would stay at eight units per acre. That's currently what it says in the bylaw. Eight units per acre.
Of single-family homes.
Okay, correct.
Of single-family homes, not two- or three-family homes. That would preclude two- or three-family homes in that district under 40R.
If it helps, I can share my screen, and you can, I can show you the 40R regulation, because again, the two of them sort of are pairs, and they have to go together. Let me know, and I can certainly share my screen.
Okay. Would the board like to do that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hilli. Mr. Mandy, can you make that happen?
I think he should be able to do that.
Thank you. Hopefully, you're seeing a word document with three colors, yellow, blue, and green. Somebody give me a thumbs up.
Yep.
Okay, so it's really, this is the 40R regulation. It clearly says that in the yellow, if you're allowing eight units per acre, it's a single-family residential use. If you're allowing 12 units per acre, it's a two- and three-family residential use, and 20 units per acre is that multifamily residential use. So again, when you think about John Glass Square, if, just thinking about the uses, the residential uses, if it's two- and three-families that you would like to allow in this overlay district, again, remember, it's an overlay district, so an applicant can use both this district but also the underlying zoning, which is a combination of business and residential B. If you allow 12 units per acre, you're essentially allowing up to two- and three-family residential uses.
So Mr. Chair, are you looking for a motion to, like, say, I was favorable to allowing a density of at least 12 units per acre for a developable land zone for two- and three-family residential use? Are you looking for a motion for approval using that language?
Yes, I'm actually, I'm looking for a motion to allow, it actually is one, two, or three numeral in there. That would be what I'd be looking for. That's correct.
I made a motion that we pass Roman numeral number two, allowing a density of at least 12 units per acre for a developable land zone for two- and three-family residential use.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Fawley. Do I hear a second?
Second with discussion.
Second by Ms. McGee. Go ahead, Ms. McGee.
So I'm reading the emails. This email is from Eric Aberdeen from Surpedad to Bill Rialt, who's the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. And Eric is speaking about scenario one and two. Scenario one is the parcel is zoned at 12 units per acre, and therefore, only two-to-three-unit structures are allowed per 40R regs. With that zoning in place and the development proposal, the project would not comply with 40R regs, as it is not using the appropriate type of structure, nor does it meet the minimum density requirements. Is that correct? So Mr. Rialt replied that it doesn't seem like legal interprets, scenario one is consistent with the statute and regulations, because the statute and regulations define structures on a single lot and containing four or more residential units as multifamily, which must be allowed at a density of at least 20 units per acre. While I think legal is comfortable with the town using the waiver provision to allow for some additional density above the minimum densities required under the statute and allowed by right under the local SGZ ordinance, it doesn't seem like they are comfortable with the town using the bylaw's waiver provision to allow a different type of residential use that would possibly conflict with intent of the statute. So it seems like scenario number one, at the 12 units per acre, does not comply with 40R regs. So if it doesn't comply with 40R regs, does that mean that that eliminates us to get the zoning density bylaw or the zoning incentive payments?
Okay, I'll put the floor over to Mr. Cornack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. That was in relation to a specific proposal that we were aware of at the Rockland Trust site. We were aware that a developer was moving forward with an apartment or reuse of that particular building, which would result in a density or a use that would not be consistent with what the 12-unit-per-acre use is. So again, remember, 12 units per acre is two- and three-family. That proposal for the Rockland Trust site is more of an apartment-type proposal, and that use would be at 20 units per acre.
Right.
So it's both use and density that you have to have in combination with each other. So what we were trying to do is make sure that if the town wanted to, say, upzone that one particular parcel, allow for 20 units per acre to get the type of use that that developer was looking for, would it be possible? And basically, what it came back with was, it was, but not in the way in which we would feel comfortable recommending it to the town, because you would get the use, but the allowed density would be much higher than what your, what that current developer is proposing.
So Mr. Cornack, through the chair. So for scenario two, Mr. Rialt's answer is that basically, they would have to build 50 units, assuming all 2.52 acres is developed, and so that's 50 units on 2.52 acres of land. That's an awful deep density. And in Eric's question, he's basically questioning if that would comply with 40R regs.
Mr. Cornack, go ahead.
I think I understand what you were saying. Essentially, what it was is allowing, or basically zoning that area as 20 units per acre would result in an awful lot of units that we didn't think the town would be comfortable with. And I think that's what you might be saying, perhaps? It's hard on the audio.
Well, I'm just, I'm reading the two scenarios, and then I'm reading Mr. Rialt's answers. And in that, for scenario two, Mr. Rialt was saying you'd have to build underground parking to meet the parking requirements for those 50 units. So I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to see where we're going with this John Glass Square, because if we're going to do 12 units per acre, is that going to comply with 40R regs? Is that going to get us our zoning incentive payment?
Mr. Chair, through you. The answer, yes, it will. The 20, or the 12 units per acre is an option under the 40R regs. The scenarios that you're reading were only in relation to the Rockland Trust site, because we knew that that developer was moving forward to may be interested in taking advantage of the 40R overlay. In the end, I guess in layman's terms, there just wasn't an option that would work for them to take advantage of 40R, and unfortunately, they would have to just move forward with a 40B. Because if they were to take advantage of redeveloping the Rockland Trust building, it would be considered a multifamily structure. That multifamily structure under 40R allows up to 20 units per acre, which would push you into the 50-some-odd units that would include that underground parking, which is something that we felt, and in discussions with them, that the town would not be willing to accept in that district. Therefore, the idea was taken off the table, and the idea of just zoning the entire overlay district of John Glass Square at 12 units per acre to only allow two- and three-family residential use would be consistent with what's already there.
Right. Good night. Thank you, Ms. Cornack. Ms. McGee, have a good call.
No, I'm sorry. I'm Jeff.
Any other comments? I believe we have a motion by Mr. Fawley, a second by Ms. McGee. Last, any other comments? Ms. McGee?
Aye.
And Chair votes, aye. Three to two passes. So, Mr. Cornack, have you got any other questions, and is that what you were looking for tonight, is a vote on that?
That, and if you had any other questions in relation to the comments that were provided by Mr. Rialt from the HCD.
Okay. Any other questions of any board members?
Mr. Chair?
Hearing, Ms. McGee?
I-
The motion has to use Roman numeral number two, 12 units per acre, two and three family units. So, Mr. Hill, you're up. Yes or no?
No.
Okay. Ms. McGee?
Nay.
Mr. Farley?
Aye.
And Chair votes, aye. Three to two passes. So, Mr. Cornet, have you got any other questions? And is that what you were looking for tonight, is a vote on that?
That, and if you had any other questions in relation to the comments that were provided by Mr. Rialt from DHCD.
Okay. Any other questions of any board members?
Mr. Chair?
Hearing, Ms. McGee?
I'd like to know, is the John Glass Square within a half a mile of the new train station?
Mr. Cornet, do you have that answer?
Yeah, I believe at the last measurement, it's just within that half mile. The outer edge is within the half mile.
Right, so I think they probably do the half mile as the crow flies, so it's just a circle around the station. Mr. Cornet?
Yep, I believe, we've done it two ways. We've done the actual walking route up the roadway, as well as the crow flies. I believe both are within the half mile. But I just want to make sure everyone is clear. When I was mentioning that housing choice of that recent legislation, that by right multi-family has to be zoned at 15 units per acre. So really what you're talking about here, and apologies if I misunderstood, was the train station zoning district. It's the one right next to the train station. That's the one that will qualify under that new, or sort of satisfy that new housing legislation that was just recently passed. And, you know, as many of you know, the reason for that is because there's shortage of housing within the state. And so this is another way to try and produce that housing. So John Glass Square would technically not qualify for that particular designation, because it's at 12 units per acre. The minimum needs to be set at 15.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Jed. Jed, if we built that satellite parking lot everybody's been talking about, because, you know, we're not going to have the overflow, but we want to have it, in case there is overflow, will that be yes? Does that satellite parking lot extend the half-mile radius?
The satellite parking lot over by the armory, is that the one you're referring? I don't know if it would extend the half-mile radius. I couldn't answer yes or no on that, unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
All right, and just a question from the Chair. So if we have that one district near the train station, does that qualify us for that train station district, and we wouldn't have to have it anyplace else? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Cornet?
Are you referring to the recent legislation conversation?
That's correct.
Yes, it would satisfy, because that currently is zoned, or the draft by law indicates that density at 20 units per acre, which would satisfy the minimum of 15. So yes, it would qualify.
Okay, so just that one spot would make us qualify, and we wouldn't have to expand that district any in that area? So, let me pause at this side. If someone within a half mile came in and wanted their area to be qualified under that train district area, because it was within a half mile, can we absolutely say no?
It's an excellent question. Perhaps I could go back to your first question. As of right now, the only guidance that we've seen in terms of that particular piece with the MBTA communities is that they designate the area to be of reasonable size. I don't believe that there has been additional information which defines what reasonable size means. Our understanding is that that's to come a little bit later, because there was two major parts of that legislation. There was that MBTA community component, but there was also the reduction of voting minimums to pass zoning changes. And so that's been sort of the forefront of the, sort of the legislation and the documentation. They are then, it's my understanding, is that they're getting to that MBTA component. So we're anticipating more guidance coming out soon to answer questions just like that. So unfortunately, I can't really give you an answer at this point.
No, I appreciate your answer. I mean, it did answer my question that it's a moving target, is what it is. And I think that we all understand that. And the question was more pointed at people that hopefully are watching this and are trying to figure out what the state is mandating, because we got the train stuck down Middleborough's front. So we not only get the train station and the traffic, we're going to get housing with it, because the state decided that. So, any other questions of any other board members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hill?
To Jed. Have, have we done homework to determine what, what we're going to need for water and sewer capacity for these types of units? And have we put a price tag on that? At the last time I knew, the wastewater superintendent, for example, was very concerned about the fact that he didn't even have the pipes sized along with 28 to get the effluent from these units to the system, to the plant. And if we don't have the financial resources to repair a pipe out in the street, right in front of the site we're talking about, and no plans to do it, and not anytime soon, what are we talking about? I mean, infrastructure. We need the infrastructure first. I mean, not after the fact. At least we need to factor it in, put a number on it. Has anybody done that?
We do, the head.
Mr. Cornet, do you have the floor?
Through Mr. Chair, I apologize. So we did, we did some rough estimates on the total demand, considering or assuming that each of these future units would be a three-bedroom unit. Total gallon per day wastewater demand was, I believe, over 200,000 gallons per day. Now, that's, it's important to note that that is very preliminary numbers. And there's a ways to go in terms of your wastewater infrastructure. There's a number of hurdles that the town has to go through in order to allow development in this bylaw, if it were to be approved at town meeting. Again, you still need to go through that public hearing, still need to go to town meeting, get all that approved. And an applicant would then have to demonstrate how they would get wastewater to their proposal. And, you know, the indication that we've received from DHCD is that, you know, those incentive payments that Ms. McGee was referring to earlier, those can be used towards improving the wastewater. But there are significant challenges in town in terms of being able to allow development based on the fact that we don't have the existing wastewater infrastructure in place. And, I mean, I won't go through them with you tonight unless you are dying to remember what those are. But there's town meeting vote, it's outside of the sewer district. So there's, there's more to be done here. This bylaw simply just puts in place the ability for someone to use it. They then have to work with the town, and the town on the other side have to work together to actually make it happen.
Could you?
Thank you, Mr. Cornet.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hill. Would it be possible, Mr. Chairman, to get Jed to do a little workshop with us,
so that we know all of the different factors that need to be considered here, and what's been done, what hasn't been done, in terms of developing those numbers and capacity, and the capacity? You know, we, if we're going to be a planning board, let's start, let's start by sitting down and working the numbers, and figure out what, what we're going to need to produce in terms of capacity to serve these units, and how much that's going to cost. That'd be a good place to start, wouldn't it, Jed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, and that is the next step in the process. Through the summer months and into the fall, early fall, it's a public engagement campaign. It's also working with the planning board to make, make sure everyone understands all of the information that will then be presented at town meeting. So that is the next step. We're simply making sure that the bylaw is on solid footing, and then we begin that process moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. I would like to add gas to the water and sewage also. You know, that, that is another thing that we've got to work on. But as a towns person, and I say this as a towns person and Chair of the planning board, my opinion is, we probably should be trying to make sure we have the capacity for these projects. But I certainly do not believe the town should be paying for the infrastructure for these properties. If they can't afford to put the infrastructure in themselves, that's their problem. If we have capacity, I mean, that's a bonus. I'm not even 100% sure that we should give them 100% capacity that, you know, I guess my opinion, Mr. Hill, is I understand what the state's mandating, but also as a planning board, I don't need to plan to do what the state wants me to do. You know, you may disagree with that. I'm just stating it as a planning board member and as a towns person, because the state wants to come in and tell us what to do, that's fine. The state can give us 5, 10, 15 million dollars to make that infrastructure and/or capacity for those units. If that's what they want, they can pay for it. I don't think the town needs to pay for it, because the state mandates it. That's just my opinion.
But they're not.
Mr. Hill?
But they're not prepared to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's their problem.
Who's, oh, wait a minute. No, 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 no.
We, just because, all right, so hang on, Ms. Bradley. We're at the point now that we're making a district. Doesn't, it's the same as approving a plan. Doesn't mean that it perks. Doesn't mean that it has everything that it needs to. Doesn't mean the well isn't that they have water supply. The only thing we're doing at this point is, we're at the starting point, making a district. Then we have to plan how we're going to make that district work. If we don't make the district, there's no use of making a plan on getting water to a, to an imaginary area. So I think that, you know, making the district first is the right way to go, and that, you know, then you, you try to take all those things into it. I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Bradley in one second, I guess, to Mr. Cornet. We are trying to do work sessions. We're going to do one on July 22nd. Hopefully, it'll be to work out well. Then I think our next one is in August. So is August too late for you to come in and have a meeting with us and give us all those specifics that we're looking for, hopefully? The floor, yours.
Thank you. It, it might be, it depends on when in August, again, because I believe your town meeting is October. So it's, it's really, I'm assuming you would want to have that working session before any of the public outreach happens. But if I'm wrong, please correct me. And if so, if I'm wrong, then yes, it would be fine, the timing. Because as soon as this bylaw becomes certain, you know, as soon as you have taken your vote tonight to approve that 12-unit per acre, we can then start putting together our outreach items and spreading the word about events that we plan to hold to allow for the public to do, just for what we're doing here. Come in, ask us questions, become familiar with the bylaw, so that when you get to town meeting, you're voting on something that you're informed about. So, again, if you wanted us to hold off until that working session, I would say that's a little tight. But if you want us to sort of move forward with, you know, getting that out the door, then I think an August timeframe might work.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Bradley.
Oh, I don't really.
And I guess, okay, if you could answer the question whether you think August is going to work too. Go ahead.
What was your question? I'm sorry. If the what?
Well, whether you think that we could wait till August to get Jed in. I know you missed part of Mr. Hill's question about whether we have capacity water and sewage-wise, and what Jed might have for answers to that. And I added gas to it.
I've heard all of that. No, I've heard, I've heard all of that. No, but I just did want to say that I agreed with what you said about creating the district and then focusing on infrastructure. Because if we don't have the district, why would we want the infrastructure?
Turn that question around, Mr. Chairman.
If we don't have the district, it will stay like it is today in perpetuity. If we create the district, then it gives a purpose to find out what we need for capacity.
Okay, so, we.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, but that's no way to plan.
It is. It's the, it's the only way to plan.
Please, I didn't interrupt you. Don't interrupt me.
Okay, I'm done.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Chairman, we're supposed to be a planning board. If we can't sit down and talk about this in a reasonable way, and talk about the fact that we, we, the planning board, have not a clue as to how we're going to need the water, the wastewater, and the gas needs of any major development, like we're talking about providing zoning to allow. We're not doing the job, folks. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Are there any other comments for any other board members? Mr. Farley?
Can I move to question?
Good.
I believe we already voted.
Yeah, you took a vote.
Ms. McGee?
We, we already voted, Mr. Chair.
That is true, too.
All right.
Yep. So, okay, so I guess we're in a little bit obvious. So, Mr. Cornet, we will get back to you when we would like you to come in. Hopefully, if we don't have too many subdivision and/or retreat lots, which I don't think we do, we probably can get you in much sooner. We'll get you in a regular meeting, and you can give us that information. So we will get in contact with you. We'll let you know where we're going with this. Sounds good, thank you. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming in. I'm going to go to number two, return at Town Hall Person Meeting, beginning June 15th. Any questions of any board member about that? What I'd like to do, and I was just to let the board know, I was the applicant in a zoning board meeting, and it just gets hotter and hotter. The more people that go in Town Hall, the harder it is to do the Zoom meetings, because the people in Town Hall are much harder to listen to than the Zoom people. So it was final when we were doing all Zoom meetings. I think the governor has decided that it is time to get back into the meeting rooms, so that we can get the public in. So I, I would say that June 15th is the day we will start to have the meetings fully in town. We will not be doing any Zoom, whether it be, you know, pot- We will not be doing any Zoom, whether it be, you know, pot Zoom and pot baiting, we will be meeting in Town Hall all the time. So does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, no questions about that, June 15th, we'll be meeting in Town Hall. Number three, required signatures, our planning board department documents. I asked to have this put on. We were having a little problem getting signatures. Voting to Town Hall is going to make that much easier, could generally resign that night. But I'd like it put on just in case we go back to this format in any shape or form. If we vote on something Tuesday, my hope would be that we could get enough signatures to get it out the door by Friday. But certainly by the next Tuesday, we need to do that. So hopefully that won't be a problem going forward, but I just wanted to throw it on there. Does anybody have any comments about that?
Bill, Mr. Chair, Bill?
Yep, I'll take Mr. Farley first, Mr. Gatto, Mr. Farley.
I apologize to the planning board and the planning board members, or the staff and the members. I've been lax in my getting into Town Hall to sign the papers. To be quite honest, I've just get back into the swing of things. It's summertime with tons of kids, things going on, and I promise I will be better in the future, so my apologies.
Okay, no problem at all, you're not the only ones. Mr. Gatto.
I'm just saying, you won't see me during the day, absolutely no way. That's the sign.
It's not a problem. Generally, we need three out of five members to sign. You know, I mean, if we have a problem, I just wanted to bring it up so that if we have a problem in the future, we'll bring it up. Where we're in Town Hall, most of the time you get three signatures that night. So going to Town Hall makes that much easier also. So, and thank you, Mr. Farley, for accepting a little blame, but don't worry about it. It certainly wasn't meant to single anyone out. I've had by towns, and I've had problems getting in to sign too. So, okay, so under D we have, I didn't think, followed South Coast Rail. I think that's, and Mr. Man deal, do you have any comment on that or anything you know about that?
I don't believe there's any new information. I don't believe there's been a meeting in the last few weeks that has new information.
Okay, I will say that South Coast Rail generally sends us a weekly or biweekly list of what they are doing in town. It's not, gee, do you have any thumbs that it's, we're doing this and just to let you know we're doing it. So other than that, I know of nothing that has changed in the South Coast Rail process. So with that, do we have any other comments from any board members or any audience or any general public?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, okay. My only comment is on the signatures. If we do come back in person, obviously we'll get most of them done in person. There could be the ones that special permits that have to be written up, and we'll know that night. And what we'll do is we'll follow up with an email when that special document is prepared. That way, nobody is trying to pop their head in to sign something that's not ready. So we'll just stay on top of that.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. McGee?
If I could speak to the signature thing. It's often hard for me to get to Town Hall Monday through Thursday because they open up when I'm leaving for work, and they're closed before I get out of work. And lately, my lunch hours have been very busy or nonexistent. So the only time that I really am available to sign is afternoon on Fridays because I get out at 12. So it's just, it is hard when you're working, you know, the hours that, you know, they're open. So I do make an effort to get in there, but sometimes it takes me a bit to get there.
I think Friday works well anyway. If we have a Tuesday meeting, hopefully the department would get things like a special permit or anything else, and even a Form A. If it gets approved on Tuesday, you know, my hope is that by Monday morning, someone would be able to pick it up. So if you get in the Friday afternoon, that's fine. I don't think it has to be rushed any more than that.
Okay.
So the only thing I'm looking for is that, you know, hopefully by Friday it could get done so that Monday morning, we could call the applicant on Friday and tell him that, you know, Monday morning will be ready and they can pick it up, that's all. And that timeline, I don't think we should be pushed any faster than that timeline. So not a problem. Okay, hearing nothing else, I'm entertaining motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Ms. McGee, second by Ms. Healy, roll call vote, Mr. Gatto.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Ms. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Farley.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good night, everyone, thank you very much.